Twenty second, so this, this is the Wednesday, December twenty second, twenty twenty one meeting, a special meeting of Franklin Township Planning Board. Franklin Township is operating under Declaration of State and Local Emergency due to the ongoing COVID nineteen pandemic, and has been determined that the public's attendance at meetings of Planning Board would pose a risk to their health, safety, and welfare. Therefore, this meeting is being relocated from the council chambers at the Franklin Township Municipal Building to a virtual meeting format is being conducted utilizing virtual remote telecommunications equipment in conformance with the directives of the state of New Jersey. Relocation of this virtual meeting of the Planning Board was posted in Township's official newspaper, The Courier News, on the Township website and within the municipal building. This notice detailed the following means of public participation. Link to the virtual meeting via WebEx or call-in number for those without internet access. Public inspection of application materials is being available via the Township website and or in the Planning Zoning Department in the municipal building. Formal action may be taken at this virtual meeting. As a reminder to board members, please mute yourselves unless you wish to speak or provide a vote. We hold questions until, well, we have no applications. We just have the session type of thing. So I'll skip that. So instructions for public input. For those members of the public that are watching via WebEx who wish to speak, there are two options. You can press the raise hand button to use this feature. If you're on the WebEx, click on the participants icon in the lower right-hand corner of your screen, which will open new participants window on the right side of your screen in the lower right-hand corner. That window will be a hand icon. Click on that hand icon and, and that will indicate that you desire to speak. For those members of the public that are listening via the call-in number and who wish to speak plus stars, press star three. At the appropriate time in the meeting, township staff will announce your name. I mute you and you'll have opportunity to provide comment. Please provide your name and address. If you're providing a statement, the board attorney will swear you in. If you're on the WebEx, please press, when you're done speaking, press the lower hand button. And if you were on the call-in, press star three yet again. Uh, so with that, um, just give me a second, Mark, to pull up, pull up the agenda from my. Uh, so we do the pledge of allegiance. Okay. Um, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And uh, since Christine's on vacation, Mark, I guess you can call the, do the roll call.
Yep. Councilman Chase.
Yeah.
Charles Brown.
The last time.
Here.
Carl Hauck. Mustafa Benzeray. Here Rafik.
Here.
Jennifer Ragnow. Can you unmute her?
Hi, I'm here.
Okay. Carol Schmidt. Semi Shabon. Bob Thomas. And Chairman Rancini.
Here.
As we do a quorum.
Okay, excellent. Um. So, um, we're going to do the, um, resolution for the board calendar. So there were no packets. So Christine mailed those out. Um, I think there was, um. One typo, right, Mark? Um, and it was, I think it was supposed to be that it was the, well, I, I, it looks correct in my copy. It's twenty twenty-two calendar. Um, the resolution date is right. I don't know if there was some other typo, but she was going to correct it. If you recall, she sent out that email, but.
I do, I do.
It was a twenty twenty-two for twenty twenty-one, but I'm struggling. Oh, oh, I see. Here, it's in the
Twenty twenty-one.
Very last paragraph. Now therefore it be resolved. If you see the last line, it said, um, will be the year twenty twenty-one. So that should be twenty twenty-two. So, um, you can, you can see the dates there.
Is being passed in twenty twenty-one.
Yeah, yeah. But in, in, in this, it says on this twenty-second day of December twenty twenty-one that the regular meeting of the Planning Township during the year twenty twenty-two, and then it lists the dates. It should be twenty twenty-two in that final line there. So, um, with that, um, correction, um, where it says, right before the dates are listed in the year twenty twenty-two, with that correction, um, I'm going to move that we adopt the calendar for twenty twenty-two. And if I can get a second. Okay, thanks, Charles. Go ahead and, uh, pull the board, Mark.
Councilman Chase.
Yes.
Charles Brown.
Yes.
Here Rafik.
Yes.
Jennifer Ragnow.
Yes.
Thank you. And Chairman Rancini.
Yes. So, um, we have no, uh, so that was our one resolution. We have no discussion items. Um, we will, I believe, Mark, right, have to open to general public comment.
Yeah, I mean, it is a regular, well, this is a, I guess now it's a scheduled meeting. So yes, you should, uh, open it up for general public comment.
Okay, so, um, I would, when we have no hearings tonight, we only have the circulation plan discussion. Um, so I will open the meeting at this time for a general planning comments. If I can have a second on that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, meeting is open at this time for anyone who wishes to make any general, um, planning related comment.
Seeing that, I move that we close.
I will second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, uh, Mark, it's all yours for the circulation plan.
Sure. Let me just do a check. Yeah, I think our attorney may be calling in on one of these lines here.
Okay.
Jim, is that you? There you go.
Yep, can you hear me?
Yep.
Can you hear me?
We can, we can.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah, I'll just keep you unmuted.
Thanks.
All right, so, um, I'll do a very, a, a brief overview. Um, so we had, um, I told that point notes in front of me. Uh, Debbie Hartman, did Deb, I'm sorry, the name of your firm again?
WSP.
WSP, okay, I'm sorry. Um, we retained the firm of WSP to do a circulation element of our master plan. Uh, we've been working with, um, staff and, and a subcommittee of the Planning Board have been working with, with Debbie and her staff, um, over the last year or so. Uh, there've been a number of drafts of that plan, again, reviewed by staff, reviewed by the, uh, ad hoc Subcommittee of the Planning Board. Um, and then at the last, uh, earlier this month, the, that draft, full draft was, uh, reviewed and presented by Debbie to the full Planning Board. Um, the purpose of tonight is a public hearing on that, on that plan. It's been posted on the Township website for about a month now. Um, Debbie's going to give an overview of the plan. Um, we'll open it up after she presents. We're going to open it up to the Planning Board for any comments or questions, and then we'll open it up to the public, uh, so they can do the same. Uh, so at this point, I'll turn it over to Debbie and ask her to, uh, present. I'll make her, give her presentation, uh, privileges.
Right. All right, that shows up now?
Yes.
Yep.
Great. Thank you, Mark. Um, hi, I'm Debbie Hartman, um, like Mark said, from WSP. We're a consulting firm that, um, put together this circulation for Franklin Township. So I just want to give you a brief overview. We're gonna, um, I'm gonna describe the vision and goals as we sought for, for this circulation study. Uh, give an overview of the existing conditions that we found and the analysis that we performed. And then also a high-level overview of the recommendations that are listed more thoroughly in the plan. In conjunction with the township, we developed a vision. It said Franklin Township seeks to preserve and enhance both its urban and rural qualities and provide multimodal transportation choices that improve safety, mobility, resilience, and access to opportunity. The circulation element promotes colla- collaboration between the township, county, and state agencies to mitigate the impacts of traffic and land development, offer more mobility options, and create a more resilient future. And from that vision, we created a series of ten goals, and they are divided into two main categories. The first larger category, um, establishes a circulation system, and it recognizes that there is a high level of through traffic in the township, but we want to minimize the negative impacts to the residents of the township. So to that end, we want to support improvement of roadways to improve safety and traffic flow, but limiting, limit widening to where, um, to small sections that can really help. Minimize through traffic in residential areas. Um, at the same time, though, discourage single outlet design so that circulation is enhanced and encourage multimodal connectivity between developments for people that are walking or biking or, or scootering. Um, and plan connector roads in, in strategic locations to improve that circulation and safety. Uh, we want to limit points of access, you know, consolidate some driveways, and then consider acceleration lanes, deceleration lanes, um, for safety to reduce conflict points. And overall, improve the resilience of the infrastructure in the town, uh, while minimizing stormwater impacts. The second large category of goals is really about safety. We want to provide a safe transportation network, um, for all users, for all mobility options. So for those goals, we want to support the complete streets measures to improve safety of all roadways for all users, um, not just vehicular users. Encourage the use of non-motorized transportation by improving connections and providing more facilities. And finally, to continue to implement, um, the Towns Bike Way Master Plan and consider, um, developing school safety plans and a, and a better pedestrian network. So we began the study by conducting an existing conditions analysis. First, we collected previous studies going back ten to fifteen years that have been developed for both the county and the town. Um, and we weeded through the recommendations in those and, um, took stock of which ones had already been completed and which ones still made sense to do. So we incorporated those, um, that, that still made sense to do going forward. We incorporated those into the plan. Um, then we collected, uh, a lot of data in the area. Um, NJDOT, the New Jersey Department of Transportation, keeps several management systems. Um, one is the pavement management system that, um, assesses the ratability of a surface, how well the, um, the concrete or the asphalt is holding up. Uh, we also looked at the congestion management system, and I'm sure it's no surprise to anyone that there is a lot of congestion on two eighty-seven, uh, twenty-seven, and then a little bit less congestion on County Route five twenty-seven. We also looked at the state's bridge management system, which also covers county bridges as well. Um, there are ten functionally obsolete bridges within Franklin Township, but that doesn't mean they're unsafe. They're just, you know, out of code or, or, you know, have weight restrictions, things like, of that nature. We also referenced the state's, um, traffic count database, and there were twenty-two count locations within the township. And finally, we looked at crash data, um, three years' worth of crash data, uh, throughout the township. Um, and the map that you see on the right there shows some of the hotspots. The redder areas show areas of higher, um, incidences of crashes. So New Jersey twenty-seven, um, and, and County Route five twenty-seven are, are the roads that really kind of stand out as, as having a higher number of crashes. We also wanted to look at multimodal uses. So, uh, for biking, we looked at a mix of what off-road and on-road bike trails are available in the town. Um, we also looked at something called level of traffic stress, which is a rating system we use from a scale of one to four. Um, where one is comfortable for all users, you know, seniors through children, um, and four is, um, you know, the road warriors, the most difficult, uh, biking conditions. And so we wanted to categorize all the roadways in the town so we can see, um, where there might be some barriers to come to biking for everyone. We also did an assessment of public transit in the township. Uh, we looked at the county services, the suit, the dash, and the cath. Um, and then the New Brunswick service that, uh, is available through Rutgers, um, and also the New Jersey Transit Rail and Bus Services that run throughout the township and throughout the county. Next, we looked at the, um, classification of the roadways in the township. Um, the roadway classification system is a hierarchy of roadways where it classifies the routes, um, based on its intended function. So, um, you know, it's, it's based on speeds and width and specifications. Um, whereas, you know, the two eighty-seven would be a limited access highway, um, and it's the highest level of classification down to your, your local roads that are owned by the township. And of all the lane miles in Franklin Township, seventy-eight percent are owned by the town, uh, fifteen percent are owned by Somerset County, and seven percent is under the jurisdiction of the state of New Jersey. So then we moved into the recommendations phase of the project. Again, we looked at the previous studies and carried forward any, um, recommendations from those that had not yet been implemented and still made sense. Um, we looked at some transit, um, uh, oriented, uh, recommendations. We also looked at specific intersections, um, on a case-by-case basis, and the improvements there might be such things such as operational improvements to signals, upgrading crosswalks to make them more visible and safe, um, installing turning lanes or acceleration lanes, or putting in curb extensions to make crossing distances a little shorter and therefore a little safer to, uh, keep that complete streets feel that we're, we're moving towards. We also looked at some corridor-wide recommendations, um, things like lowering speed limits, using traffic calming, um, marking the shoulders a little more clearly to kind of delineate and, uh, where the cars should be as opposed to, you know, a bike or, or another user. Uh, and we also made recommendations for bike facilities because we want to connect, um, and extend. There is, is a pretty actually good network of off-road facilities. We want to make sure that you can connect from one to another and kind of get across and around the township and to, you know, important recreational or points of interest in the town. And then the report focused on a couple of different specific areas within the township. So the first one we looked at is the Hamilton Street Focus area. Um, it's, it's a really great compact network of streets, um, and it's some great opportunities for improvement to really make, um, this a really special and welcoming place. So we have a series of traffic calming recommendations, um, specifically looking at some gateway treatments so that people know that they're entering a space where bikes might be prevalent and pedestrians might be crossing to kind of give that, uh, forward-looking, uh, advanced warning that to treat, um, the roadway a little bit differently. We want to complete the, complete the sidewalk network in the area, fill in any gaps, um, that are missing or, you know, reconstruct sidewalk as needed, and try to lower the speed limit throughout as an improvement for safety for all users in the area. There are also several public transit improvements recommended in this area, extending bus stops, um, improving amenities and improving crosses, crossings in front of bus locations, um, and consider, uh, a bus route to the NJ Transit Station at Bound Brook. And then finally, we also had a series of bicycle and pedestrian focus recommendations, be putting showers in, converting Lewis Street to a bike boulevard, which is a lower-speed roadway that is safe for all bike, levels of bike users, um, you know, looking at some requirements from the town to require bike parking with any new development that comes in and providing some links that are, um, specific to or limited to just bicycles and pedestrians. And the next focus area we looked at was the two eighty-seven commercial area, um, and this one specifically at World's Fair Drive. So we use this as kind of a prototype, as a typical corridor, a typical office, um, office district. So the strategies that we recommended here can be used in other areas of the township where it's a similar, um, land use. So we looked specifically at consolidating some of the driveways. Um, there's a lot of, uh, redundant driveways that creates a lot of conflict points um, for pedestrians that are trying to cross the driveways, vehicles coming in and out, stopping at the last second. So to improve safety, um, we've recommended consolidating a number of those driveways and then also investigating lowering the speed limit. Um, and coupled with that, some bicycle and pedestrian recommendations to improve visibility for pedestrians at crosswalks, completing the sidewalk, sidewalk network where it's not, uh, currently completed. Um, there's room for a standard bike lane in the area. That'd be a great way for, um, employer, employees to get around and consider meeting in islands and bus stop shelters to really make, um, non-motorized or not, uh, you know, transit uses a little bit more, um, appealing in the area. So at the end of the report, we had a hundred and fifty-three, um, unique recommendations. Um, some of them, again, were pre, from previous studies, um, and some of them were brand-new to the study. And as you can see, kind of, um, it's, it's a pretty good spread of different types of recommendations that, uh, cover roadway, um, traffic recommendations. The highest number is bicycle and pedestrian. Ninety of the recommendations are related to bicycle or pedestrian improvements. So we're really trying to make the streets safer for all users and, and, um, you know, complete this, the township's vision for their, their complete streets master plan. Um, and also transit-type recommendations. Their matrix also, um, uh, indicates which agency should take the lead on these improvements. Um, so the township would, um, and the county are responsible for the majority, and by responsible, I mean, they would, you know, uh, lead the effort with partnering with each other, um, and the state as needed, depending on the, the jurisdiction and the type of improvement that it was. We also indicated a, um, order of magnitude cost, whether it was low, medium, or high, and this implementation matrix together kind of will help the township, um, prioritize uh, funding as it comes along. It helps, um, you know, prioritize as, as projects come down, you know, and where, where any of these can be implemented alongside and really helps, um, figure out, uh, which are the most important to the township, so those can be moved forward first as they make sense. And, uh, with that, that is the end of our presentation. So, um, Mark, I hand it back to you for questions.
Uh, yes, so, um, yeah, as indicated, I, I don't know if, if the board, um, has any comments or, or questions that they, that they want to, um, bring to Debbie's attention?
Oh, Mark, I'll make the same comment I did when, when we first had the presentation and, uh, which is, is first of all, to, to thank Debbie and the members of the Planning Board who were on, um, this committee doing this work. Um, I think the awareness already has guided, um, some discussion, actually, in our last application, uh, last week, when we talked about signage, um, and in, and, and directing uh, traffic at Elizabeth and, um, uh, Belmont, you know, um, off of the new, um, uh, recently approved warehouse. So, you know, I think, Mark, I mean, I think that, obviously, we all know that state projects of any sort probably beyond just the township's ability, you know, we can influence it. Obviously, multiple townships can, you know, the whole is greater than the sum of the parts in terms of influence. But one of the things I thought that it might be useful to do, uh, in the new year, is just take this list of recommendations, um, and, and at least start to, and the way they're broken down already by township, county, and state, low, medium, and high cost. Um, I, I think, I think we could maybe separate those a little bit, um, and, and take a look at which ones are township first, uh, because we have the ability to influence those, um, either in plans that come up. Um, you know, for example, realigning New Brunswick Road and Cedar Grove Lane is a perfect example of one that we've long wanted to do. And, uh, when and if, uh, that property, um, which is now the landscaping business gets, gets sold, uh, we'll have the ability to do that. And I know, I, I'm pretty sure the county is on board with that as well. Um, so that will happen, uh, in time, uh, but it obviously requires that land to become available, um, and to, for us to be able to have some influence there. Um, some other things we could do a lot, a lot more quickly, um, and obviously, we can work with the county, uh, to do them as well. So, I mean, I think in the new year, we could try to parse things that way, if possible, Mark, to just sort of see what we, just to have it in mind, certainly, at least when we see applications, um, we can, we can sort of keep these recommendations in mind. Um, we've certainly done it on Elizabeth Avenue with sidewalks. We've certainly done it, you know, with some of the recommendations made, uh, all along that corridor with the, the, the business and industry, um, zone. Um, suggestions that Charles has made, um, suggestions that the rest of the board has made, um, to, to construct a complete sidewalk network from the high school all the way up to those uses and beyond, uh, and to have pedestrian, you know, um, crosstalk between, for example, as Charles had suggested, between the Shoprite and the new warehouse. Perfect example of way to keep traffic off of Elizabeth. If somebody is just wanting to, to, to connect to those, to those uses and, and even to the, to the, um, um, outlet, um, across the street, you could actually go from the Shoprite across to there. So, so that's why I think these things are really probably, um, best to keep front of mind. And I assume that we'll, I don't know if we're gonna vote on it tonight, Mark, but are we going to make, we're, we're intending to make this circulation element, uh, circulation study, uh, part of the master plan?
Yes, so if you, uh, if the board is so inclined, you could, at the end of this, um, make a, a motion, second, and vote to, uh, adopt it as an element to the master plan, and we'll follow up with the um, memorializing resolution at another meeting.
Okay, excellent. And that gives us a little more, that gives us a little more teeth, right, when it's part of the, part of the master plan. So, um, I think that's definitely something we should do. And that's really all I have to say. I mean, I think, I think it was, it's a great piece of work. It's very comprehensive. It's very uh, understandable and, and, and very, you know, implementable. Um, not all of it's implemental, obviously, but, um, a lot of it is, um, as long as we, as long as we don't forget about it. So, um, uh, thanks again, Debbie. Does any member, other members of the board have any questions or comments?
Uh, this is Charles. I have, um, comment and a question, two comments. First of all, I think it's, it's, it's very well done, uh, Debbie. So thank you, you and your team. Secondly, um, I second, actually, Chairman Rancini, as it relates to the importance of prioritizing where we have jurisdictional control, um, in regards to this plan. We, we know how challenging it could be to get other levels of government to make the changes in a needed time within the township. Uh, so it's important that we place priority on what we can and cannot do. Um, thirdly, and I may have seen this, but how is lighting being addressed? Uh, the township could really benefit from a comprehensive plan around LED lighting because we know circulation can be impacted by a number of factors and concerns such as your personal safety as well as safety from traffic, both of which are influenced by lighting. So I may have missed it, but where's the lighting piece?
There was not a lighting analysis done on a township-wide level as part of this.
Is there any recommendations to do so? And is it too late to add that as a consideration?
It is not too late. I'll have to look back more specifically and see if it's mentioned. I mean, there might be some recommendations for some pedestrian scale lighting at some of the intersection improvements that we recommended as far as like lighting, crosswalks, and this and that, but there's, um, uh, there's no, that I, there is no, uh, township-wide recommendation to look at lighting. But if that's something the council wants to add, we can certainly put that in as a recommendation.
I, I would like so because, I mean, when you look at Hamilton, Hamilton Street Corridor, we did the, um, Septeenth Crime Prevention through Environmental Design Study there, the Naaman Williams Memorial Park. And there are huge differences between the new lighting that's on that corridor, uh, as opposed to some of the, the older lighting. And so if we are to improve safety, mobility, and in this case, circulation throughout the township, uh, we have to transition to LED lighting.
And Charles, is that, is this a, this is a, obviously for visibility and safety and, and
Absolutely.
For, for motorists, pedestrians, and cyclists?
For all modes. Correct.
And this is, and it's, it's, uh, lighting along roadways and sidewalks.
Absolutely. Right, so it's both pedestrian scale and traditional scale lighting, which is mostly oriented towards automobiles. But whenever new lighting comes into the township, we should be encouraging, if not demanding, LED light.
Okay. And, and obviously, some of the, you know, um, of, as we know, some of the roads are under the township jurisdiction. Some are under the county, so we, we would have to, um, you know, work with or, or, um, partner with, with the county to, to encourage improvements along those lines. So
Right.
Um, I, I would suggest, I, I think Debbie understands, I think, I think we understand your point. Um, I'm sure Debbie can come up with some language, um, that describes that, and it, I think to the degree that we've discussed it just now, I, you know, I think a, a paragraph describing that that's something that should be looked at, um, and evaluated. Um, if the board was, so I would suggest if the board was inclined, um, to approve it, it, it could be subject to adding a paragraph to that degree, and we can send the draft of that to Charles if, if, if the board wishes, uh, wants him to take a look at that before we put it in the plan.
No, I think, I think
The last piece isn't, right, the last piece won't be necessary. I trust, you know, the professionalism of the firm. You, you've, um, entrusted with this work. They do fantastic work. So just adding a paragraph will be sufficient enough for me, Mark.
Okay.
And I would, I would focus that, uh, sort of on And I would, I would focus that sort of on what you would want, you know, and Charles spoke to this, but what you would want above, above and beyond what we can, we can really ask developers to do, which is the township's code and the residential site improvement standards. So beyond those two things. And Charles, this is maybe another way that we can effectuate, and maybe, maybe you're a good person to do this, to take a look at it. I mean, obviously, we have township ordinances around lighting. And I don't know how old they are. I don't know when they've been updated, and Mark could help with this. But that would be one way to actually enshrine this in more than just recommendations, but actual standards that we have to, that development will be held to. So we should actually take a look at that, because, you know, we tend to put the ordinances on, and they get changed when they don't work anymore, and it becomes really obvious. Well, lighting is probably not one of the things that's top of mind, right? It'll be zoning ordinance, or it'll be, you know, some, something else, density or floor area ratios that get more attention because you're using those to kind of channel a certain type of development. But I think that the lighting standards, right, in the, in, in the township ordinances could be, could be looked at and, and see whether they, they actually need some work. And, and since our former colleague, Cecile, is no longer here and would always, of any developer, demand LED lighting. I, I know all of us have, Charles or I, or if it's not already prescribed in the application, we've actually asked for it, and, and we always get it. So I would continue to make sure that we do that with our applications, LED lighting, and, you know, sufficient lighting. So focus maybe, this is way too long, but focus on what is above and beyond what we have codified. What's in the residential site improvement standards where we really want to focus. You know, lighting, and we feel, feel we need more than that, for whatever reason.
Okay. Okay, any other comments or questions from board members? Okay, and to remind the public, it looks like we do have at least one member of the public here. And that's somebody who's calling in. If they want to have any, offer any questions or comments to the board, you can press star three, and that'll alert us to your desire to, to speak.
Now, Mark, do I have to open this, or since it's a sort of a work session, is public comment is sort of now's the time, or do you want me to?
Yeah, you know, it's funny with this, yeah, with this format, it's kind of strange. Yeah, I think you should formally open it up to comment. The person has been, you know, we have alerted them to their, to the ability to pressing star three, but I think you should go through that motion of doing that.
Okay, I'll make a motion to open to the public for comments on this particular circulation element plan.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Meeting is open to the public for comment.
Hey, Mike, I, I mean, a member of the public has had, I think, ample opportunity to, to raise their hand, and they have not.
Well, since I just opened it, I'll wait a few more seconds, even though we've been discussing it for 20 minutes or so. Just to make sure that no one feels missed. All right, seeing no takers, I move to close the public portion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, let's, I'll, I'll entertain a motion, I guess, at this point, seeing that there's no other board comments or questions that we adopt this as part of the, the circulation element as part of the master plan. With the addition of a paragraph addressing needs for enhanced lighting for all transportation modalities, say that. And if that sounds good, if not, Charles, feel free to suggest additional language there.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, so why don't I do a roll call vote?
Yes, please.
Charles Brown?
Yes.
We hear Rafiq?
Yes.
Jennifer Ragnow? Oh, we unmute her. Jennifer?
Thanks, Mark. Yes.
Okay, Councilman Chase?
Yes.
And Chairman Orsini?
Yes. So the motion carries.
All right.
Thank you, Debbie, and, and we can, we can let you go. And, and again, thanks for your work and the work of the members of the planning board who served on this circulation element work.
Absolutely. Thank you for having me. Happy holidays, everyone.
Happy holidays, Debbie.
Take care.
Bye, Debbie.
So before we adjourn for 2022, and I guess I'll have to send an email, because not all the board members are here tonight, and that's understandable, given the time of year it is. But for those who are here in person, I just want to thank you for your service this year to the planning board. I would like to thank you for your work and your diligence, your comments, and, and your service to Franklin Township and your continued service. In the case of Ted Chase, who won't be on the planning board as a representative from council, the hope is that we can continue to retain his unmatched expertise, unmatched knowledge of the township, and, and on, really unmatched work ethic for all the committees and all the things that he has participated in over the course of his career, which I, I can't even begin to enumerate, and I would be only taking about half of it since I moved into the township in 99 and probably met Ted around 2000 sometime. So hopefully, we'll be able to retain him as a, in a different capacity on the planning board as a, as a different class of member. And, but we will wish him for now a very and congratulate him in his service since he'll be leaving council. Ted, I know you got a much more lavish send-off at council and the plaque and the ceremony and all that, so I don't have anything like that queued up, but only, only best wishes.
Oh, thank you, Ed. It's been a pleasure.
No, and I will not say goodbye to you just yet as a member of the planning board. So hopefully, like I said, we, we have a way to get you back on as a, another class of member. So to everyone else, happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Or for anybody who says celebrated Hanukkah, Diwali, or, or, or anything else that came earlier in the month, hope that was great. And I want you to have a, a safe and enjoyable, with emphasis on safe, as well as enjoyable, but, and healthy holidays and Happy New Year.
Same to you, Mike. Take care.
Happy New Year.
Yep. Take care. See you in '22.